Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet on the floor, please. Council members, please take your respective seats. Quiet on the floor, please. Quiet, please. At this time, please place all electronic devices to vibrate. Mr. Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I am Majority Leader Keith Powers and like to thank everyone for joining us here today. If you'd like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on the City Council website.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Baron. Butcher.
Here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Butcher.
Cheers.
Here.
Thank you. Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Feliz.
Presente.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Kagan.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Here.
Here.
Thank you. Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Wrestler. Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez. Schulman.
Here.
Apologies, Sanchez, present.
Thank you. Stevens.
Present.
Ung.
Present.
Velazquez.
Present.
Vernikov.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Juan.
Present.
Jaeger.
Here.
Borelli.
Present.
Powers.
I am present and quite confused about what is going on at Joe Borelli's household right now. But I am actually, in fact, here.
Thank you. Speaker Adams.
I too am quite confused by Joe Borelli, and I am present.
Wrestler.
Here.
Thank you. We are now going to have today's invocation delivered by the venerable Yu Lin, Director of the Fuguangshan New York Temple and International Buddhist Society, located at one fifty-four thirty-seven Barclay Avenue in Flushing, Queens. Welcome.
A auspicious greeting to the state leaders, council members, and guests. I'm Yu Lin from Fuguangshan New York Temple. Thank you for inviting me. I'm honored and humbled to share an invocation for today's meeting. Let us now pray to the name of our spiritual leaders, oh great compassionate God and Buddha. At the beginning of the new year, we will look upon everything in the past as a yesterday that has passed away, everything in the future as a today that is newly born. Oh great compassionate God and Buddha, in the new year, please grant that every word we say may be compassionate, kind, and encouraging; that everything we do may be acceptable to most people and beneficial to the masses; that every intention we have may be a blessing to others and a transfer of merits to them; that every action we take may be beneficial to the nation and of assistance to the world; that we may be willing to contribute our body and mind to society; that we may be willing to share everything we owned with others. Oh great compassionate God and Buddha, please give us strength. Allow us to progress on the way to enlightenment wholeheartedly without idleness and without regret. A new spirit influences the new year. Allow us to start everything anew.
Thank you, and happy new year. Thank you for being with us here today. I'm going to call on Councilmember Sandra Ung to spread the invocation today on the record.
Thank you, Majority Leader Keith Powers. Venerable Yu Lin has been valued spiritual leader in my hometown of Flushing and the greater Buddhist community in New York City throughout her work and teachings at Fuguangshan Temple, where my family has worshipped for many years. It is my wish that the members of the City Council take it towards the heart as we begin our collective work here today. Also, I want to take this opportunity to wish all my colleagues a happy and healthy Lunar New Year. Thank you. And I would like to thank Venerable Yu Lin for being here today and make a motion that the invocation be spread in full upon the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Ung will now have the adoption of the minutes by Councilmember Tiffany Caban.
I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two be adopted as printed.
Thank you. We'll go to messages and papers from the mayor.
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
Pre-considered M one zero nine, Board of Elections' appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Petitions and communications.
Pre-considered Ms. one ten and one eleven, Board of Correction' appointments.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
Land use call-ups.
M one twelve, two thirteen, two twenty-seven, West Twenty-Eighth Street Parking Special Permits.
Coupled on call-up vote, I would now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-up items.
Excuse me. Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Butcher.
Mr. Majority Leader, I request permission to vote on all items on today's general order calendar.
Go ahead.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks Powers.
Here.
Aye.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Farias.
Aye or aye on all?
Feliz.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Kagan.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Requesting permission to vote on all items on today's general order calendar.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Velazquez.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye or aye.
Juan.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Borelli.
Aye or aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Thank you. Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of fifty in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I hope you and your families are safe, healthy, and well. I want to begin today by briefly discussing the mayor's preliminary budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Last week, the mayor released his preliminary budget, and the council is reviewing its details to prepare a more comprehensive response and hold oversight hearings on agency budgets. As a body, we made clear that the budget vision put forward in the November plan that largely remained intact in the new financial plan is unacceptable and not in the best interest of New York City. Our city is currently facing multiple crises that require smart investments to support New Yorkers being healthy and safe. Communities across our cities rely on essential services from their city government that the proposed budget is undermining. The cuts to crucial city funding for cuny, libraries, early childhood education, social services, and so much more are not a recipe for success. This council cannot and will not support this counterproductive approach. As part of our budget oversight, we will examine the efficiencies in the current city spending to ensure it is fulfilling the priorities of New Yorkers. We will also work with our partners throughout the city to further illuminate the impact of the mayor's preliminary budget on New Yorkers' lives and ability to thrive. As a city, we must prioritize investments that maintain essential services. When budget decisions fail to solve ongoing city agency staffing challenges that have hindered the delivery of services to address the housing crisis, food insecurity, and our many other challenges, there is a real problem. Our communities and residents need an effective, functioning city government. The council's vision is focused on fulfilling this obligation and building an equitable city that makes New York City a cleaner, healthier, and safer place for all. The coming weeks and months will require us as a body to unite behind efforts that successfully deliver results for New Yorkers. I look forward to rolling up our sleeves to engage in this work together and helping to achieve that goal for the city. On Monday, our country celebrated the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., whose struggle for racial and economic justice continues today. This is an important day, not just to reflect on the continued progress we've made as a society, but to recommit to the unfinished work in our daily efforts that fulfill Dr. King's vision. The vast inequalities that Dr. King lamented more than a half a century ago persist today in many of our own neighborhoods that continue to struggle with underinvestment. That is why the city budget is such an important focus for us. As elected officials, we can advance Dr. King's vision for economic and racial justice by delivering important investments and policies for our communities and all New Yorkers. As we remember and commemorate Dr. King's extraordinary life, let us not forget or distort his mission for justice, equality, and collective liberation. As we were celebrating Dr. King and his message of love, our city sadly experienced several acts of hate that must be loudly condemned. Homophobic and transphobic messages and vandalism related to drag story hour continued to be directed at Councilmember Krishnan and his family in front of their home. It is unacceptable behavior that we must not tolerate. Over the weekend, anti-Semitic graffiti was found in Forest Park in Councilmember Schulman's district. This hate targeting our Jewish communities is equally vile and unacceptable, and we unequivocally denounce it. It is especially harmful as we approach International Holocaust Remembrance Day on January twenty-seventh, when we honor the memory of millions of Jewish people and other victims who were murdered during the Holocaust and make a solemn pledge never again. We will not be silent in the face of hate. We must work together across our diverse communities to combat hate in our city and around the world. I also want to say a few words about our city's approach to helping asylum seekers and longtime New Yorkers facing similar challenges in our homeless shelter and other social service systems. It is without question that our city needs more funding and coordinating support from our federal government to fulfill our obligation to support people, including solutions to expedite work authorization. Yet, New York City's government also has an obligation to address the challenges with policies and services within our control. The council is focused on ensuring our own government simultaneously takes responsibility for improving city services, which is why we released an important report on various issues and continue to advance solutions through legislation and other means. This should be a moment of unity, not one that pits asylum seekers against others. Before I continue, I want to take a moment to remember the life of John Wright, founder of the Wright Group, who passed away earlier this week. John was an incredible advocate for New York City, who championed equity and support for our communities. His work with nonprofit organizations, arts and cultural institutions, human service providers, and criminal justice organizations benefited countless New Yorkers. We will always remember his legacy and the impact he had on the people of this city. Our warmest thoughts are with John's family, friends, colleagues, and everyone who was fortunate enough to have known him. I also want to acknowledge the loss of several New Yorkers who died while on the job over the past several weeks. Dwayne Patterson, a beloved sixty-one-year-old bouncer and Air Force veteran from Inwood; Abu Kar Touré, an auto shop worker from Harlem; and Police Officer Stephen Hernandez, who served our city as public servant and was assigned to one hundred twenty-first Precinct in Staten Island. Our hearts are heavy with each of their deaths, and we send our deepest condolences to their families and loved ones during this difficult time. On a much brighter note, January fifteenth is Founder's Day for the Sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. This year, we celebrated one hundred fifteen years on the fifteenth of service and sisterhood and to my sisters across the country and across the world, including Councilmember Farias. Happy Founder's Day! January twenty-second marks the start of Lunar New Year. This year, we are celebrating the Year of the Rabbit, which symbolizes longevity, peace, and positivity. On Tuesday, Councilmembers Sandra Ung, Linda Lee, Julie Juan, and I hosted Lunar New Year and Los Ar celebration right here in the council chambers, where we honored community leaders and were treated to beautiful cultural performances. It was a great celebration, and I want to thank everyone who attended and helped to make it a success. I wish all New Yorkers who are celebrating a happy, healthy, and prosperous Lunar New Year. On January twenty-second, we will observe Roe v. Wade Day, which celebrates the anniversary of the landmark decision that granted the federally protected right to safe and legal abortions. This year should have been the fiftieth anniversary of Roe v. Wade, but the United States Supreme Court overturned our legal right to safe reproductive health care, putting millions of lives in danger across this country. We've done our part in New York to safeguard and expand access to abortion by passing the historic NYC Abortion Rights Act and investing an unprecedented one million dollars to support abortion care access for those who cannot afford it. Our Women Majority Council enacted legislation requiring the city to provide free abortion medication at health clinics, and this week, the administration announced its implementation efforts. This Roe v. Wade Day, we remain steadfastly committed to making sure everyone can safely and legally access abortion and reproductive health care. January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, during which we raise awareness about human trafficking, strengthen efforts to combat it, and empower and support survivors. According to the State Department, more than twenty-six point, twenty-seven point six million people around the world are subjected to human trafficking, especially those who are most vulnerable. This underscores the importance of providing compassionate care and support for people fleeing violence and persecution, including asylum seekers in our city. And finally, I want to wish a happy belated birthday to Councilmember Alexa Aviles. Feliz cumpleaños! Also, yesterday was the birth of my amazing first deputy chief of staff, Faisal Ali! I hope you both had a great celebration with your family and your loved ones. We also recognize the birthday of Councilmember Athia Stevens! Happy birthday to all of you. All right, now let's move on to our stated agenda. We'll be voting on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannan to authorize an Article XI exemption for one building and part Slope Gowanus; and a transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. Next, we will be voting on the following land use items. Ninety-seven dash twenty-seven Fifty-seventh Avenue Commercial Overlay will facilitate the redevelopment of the existing food bazaar supermarket into a mixed-use building with eighty-two housing units above an expanded new supermarket in Councilmember Moya's district. Fifty-eight dash oh-two Northern Boulevard rezoning, an application to facilitate a new two-story eight-thousand-square-foot auto showroom in the Woodside neighborhood of Queens in Councilmember Juan's district. The council will be voting on a resolution to disapprove this application. The Gowanus Green Empire State Development Corporation granted HPD requests for up to five million dollars in capital funding from the Empire State Development Corporation under the Restore New York Communities Initiative to support the first phase of the Gowanus Green Affordable Housing Development in Councilmember Hanif's district. And for the thirty-four Morningside Avenue cluster, we'll be voting on a technical correction to Council Resolution two sixty-one from last year related to the Urban Development Action Area Project and for approval of a new forty-year Article XI tax exemption. The tax exemption will apply separately to each individual property in the disposition area in Councilmember Richardson Jordan's district. Next, we will be voting on the following pieces of legislation. First, we'll consider a package of resolutions in support of the people of Puerto Rico following the devastation and destruction caused by Hurricane Maria and Hurricane Fiona, which highlighted longstanding infrastructure problems on the island and galvanized calls for political self-determination. Resolution three eighty-seven, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, calls on the United States Congress to repeal the Merchant Marine Act of nineteen twenty, commonly known as the Jones Act. Resolution three ninety-two A, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban, declares support for a democratically governed public entity that will provide reliable and affordable electrical power to the people of Puerto Rico and support for the immediate cancellation of the contract with Luma Energy. Resolution fifty-seven A, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, calls on Congress to pass and the president to sign a bill in support of self-determination for Puerto Rico. Thank you to our staff member Regina Paul. Next, as part of the Agent Place NYC Package, Introduction six seventy-two A, sponsored by Agent Committee Chair Crystal Hudson and co-sponsored by Councilmembers Linda Lee and Lynn Schulman, requires the Department for Aging, or DIFTA, to identify the communities served by each older adult center and the prevalent spoken languages of each community, and to notify each older adult center of those languages at least once annually. The bill requires DIFTA to direct each older adult center to develop and conduct programming in each of the identified languages. Introduction six seventy-three A, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, would entitle any person sixty years, sixty years of age or older facing eviction or termination of tenancy in housing court to full legal representation at no cost. This bill would also require DIFTA to establish a housing support program to provide tailored case management services to these older adults who are at risk of eviction or foreclosure. The bill also directs the Office of Civil Justice to work with older adults to educate and inform them about their rights in housing court. Introduction six seventy-four A, sponsored by Chair Hudson, would require DIFTA to create and maintain a No Year Rights pamphlet for older adults who are at least sixty years old to inform them of their rights and improve access to resources. The pamphlet would describe each topic and provide the name, address, contact information, and website of the relevant agency and community-based organization that an older adult may contact to obtain additional information. DIFTA would also be required to conduct outreach on the pamphlet and report annually on its outreach efforts. Thank you to our staff members Christopher Pepe, Chloe Rivera, and Daniel Krup. Next, Introduction six six C A, sponsored by Higher Education Committee Chair Eric Dinowitz, would require the mayor's office for people with disabilities or any office designated by the mayor to establish a program to help students with disabilities who are entering institution of higher education in obtaining accommodations by providing a system for students' consent to the sharing of information about their special education services and providing student advocates for related support. The bill also requires the designated office to conduct outreach on the program and to submit an annual report to the mayor and the speaker of the council, as well as post it on its website, and we thank our staff members Regina Paul and Christina Yelamati. Next, Introduction eight fifty-five, sponsored by Majority Whip Silvina Brooks Powers, would require additional disclosure from independent expenditure committees, also known as super PACs, that spend money supporting or opposing local ballot proposals. Specifically, these organizations would have to report information about their funding sources to the Campaign Finance Board. In addition, they would have to identify themselves by name, along with their top three donors in their literature, advertisements, and other communications. By adding these new disclosure requirements, this bill would ensure that super PACs that spend money on ballot proposals are subject to the same rules as those that fund candidate elections. Thank you to our staff members CJ Murray and Erica Cohen for your work. And finally, we're voting on Introduction five fifty-nine A, sponsored by Consumer and Worker Protection Committee Chair Councilmember Marjorie Velazquez. The Skip the Stuff Bill would decrease plastic waste in New York City by prohibiting food service establishments, third-party food delivery services, and third-party courier services from providing eating utensils, napkins, condiment packets, and extra eating containers to customers with their takeout and delivery orders unless the customer has specifically requested those items from the restaurant or third-party platform facilitating the order, and we thank you to our staff members Sarah Swain and Natalie Melzer. Thank you all for your attention, and I will turn it back into the hands of the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. Before we go forward, I want to echo your comments on John Wright. He was an amazing guy, very big soul, and for the cultural institutions here in the city, a great advocate for them, including the ones in my district, and he will be sorely missed, and obviously, a lot of us are very deeply upset about the loss and want to send his family and friends our condolences. With that, we are now going to move into general orders. We are going to begin with Councilmember Dinowitz, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. You know, I, teaching in our public schools for fourteen years, year after year, I would see my students with disabilities work hard with their supports and their accommodations, as outlined in their IP. They'd go off to college only to have those supports abruptly taken away from them. Transitioning to higher education is tough enough for any high school senior, and we should be doing everything we can to support our students in every way so that they can thrive in college. So this bill that we're voting on today, Introduction six sixty A, requires the mayor's office for people with disabilities, in consultation with the Department of Education and other relevant stakeholders, to develop and manage a program to assist students with disabilities who are graduating high school to obtain accommodations at college and ease their transition to higher education. transition to higher education. With this bill, thousands of students every single year are going to benefit. As a result, I believe the students with disabilities, the very students we should be supporting the most, they're going to see greater success in college. I want to thank my legislative director, Adam Starapoli, my chief of staff, Jenna Klaus, committee's policy analyst Regina Paul, senior finance analyst Nia Hyatt, and Christina Yelamati for their work on this bill. I want to thank as well my colleagues who are sponsors, and of course, encourage everyone here to vote on 660, vote yes today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. We'll now go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Velazquez.
Thank you. Today, the council will take an important step towards transparency and democratic accountability in our elections. Currently, when a super PAC spends thousands for or against a candidate, they must disclose where the money came from and include "paid for by" notices on advertisements. But when a super PAC spends money on a ballot measure, the PAC is not subject to these requirements. This discrepancy doesn't make sense. Ballot measures have major implications for our city. For example, in 2019, the city adopted ranked choice voting in local elections. Last year, voters approved a series of ballot measures in 2022 to support racial justice in New York, including the establishment of the mayor's Office of Racial Equity. Organizations have spent millions to impact voter decisions on the city's ballot measures. When big money is spent to influence our elections, whether for a candidate or a ballot proposal, the public should know who is spending the money. Disclosure is how we mitigate the impacts of dark money in New York City. That's why alongside Councilmembers Farias, Caban, and others, I'm sponsoring Introduction 855. This bill will make our campaign finance more consistent and improve transparency and accountability in our elections. I want to thank my colleagues for their support, and I look forward to the passage of this legislation.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Velazquez.
Thank you, Majority Leader Powers, Speaker Adams, and fellow council members. I want to thank many of you for signing on in support of Intro 559A, better known as Skip the Stuff. Feels good, huh? This bill aims to reduce the amount of unnecessary plastics and other items that food establishments give to customers. In the U.S., over 100 million plastic utensils are used daily, and some analysts estimate that Americans waste $40 billion, that's right, $40 billion, plastic utensils per year. While many of us try to recycle or save these items for the future, most of them end up in landfills where they can enter our water system and harm our ecosystem. Reducing this waste will hopefully help our environment at no cost to businesses, consumers, or our city. This bill has been a real labor of love and an opportunity to engage with many people across New York City. Specifically, we have NRDC, Surf Rider, and WCS. By far, the greatest part of this has been to hear from children. I think about PS188 in the Lower East Side, I think about all the schools in my district, and the importance of the environmental issues and getting to work with them to testify at the committee hearing and engaging in the policy process. I'm honored by the overwhelming support from the council in the passage of this bill and the ability to pass such a meaningful piece of legislation that will have positive impacts for generations to come.
Thank you. Just think of anyone else who would like to speak on general orders. Seeing nobody else, we'll now move to the report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Aging, Intro 672A, Cultural Programming at Older Adult Centers.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 673A, Housing Court Support for Older Adults.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 674A, Know Your Rights Pamphlet for Older Adults.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, Intro 559A, Third-Party Courier Service and Plastic Utensil Use.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered Reso 457 Transparency Resolution.
coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered LU 163 and Reso 466 Property Tax Exemption.
coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, Intro 855A, Contributors to Municipal Ballot Initiatives.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Higher Education, Intro 660A, Higher Education Translation Services.
amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 155 and Reso 467, 97-27 57th Avenue Commercial Overlay.
coupled on general orders.
LU 156 and Reso 468, and LU 157 and Reso 469, 58-02 Northern Boulevard rezoning.
Motion to Disapprove.
LU 158 through 161 Various Applications.
Approved modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 162 and Reso 470 Gowanus Green ESDC Grant Application.
coupled on general orders.
Pre-Considered LU 164 and Reso 471, 34 Morningside Avenue Cluster Technical Correction.
coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar Resolution Appointing Various Persons Commissioner of Deeds.
coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye on all except for pre-considered Reso 0457 and Intro 559A. For those, I vote no.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Thank you. Barron.
I vote abstain on LU 155 and Reso 467. I abstain on LU 156 and Reso 468. I abstain on LU 157 and Reso 469. I vote yes on 162 470, 164 471, and 163 466. I want to commend Councilmember Hanif for the 100% affordability, and Councilmember Christian Richardson Jordan for the nearly 60% affordability, and your negotiations were what this council needs and what the community needs, so I commend both of you on that, and I vote aye on all the rest.
Thank you. Brennan.
Aye on all.
Brewer.
Aye on all, and congratulations to everyone who passed bills today.
Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I want to thank Councilmember Velazquez for her work on Skip the Stuff, which I am proud to co-sponsor. This legislation will have a meaningful impact on New York City's footprint. It is good for the environment, and as Councilmember Velazquez pointed out, it is good for our restaurants' bottom lines as well. I also want to acknowledge and commend Councilmember Dinowitz on his bill today, establishing a program to help high school students with disabilities as they transition to higher education. As someone with a nephew with special needs in school, I know how important it is that we provide members of the disability and special needs communities the services they need to succeed in educational environments. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Hudson for all of her work that she and her offices put in to move forward the Age and Place Package. There are so many exciting policy ideas in this package. We all know how crucial it is for the city to provide for and protect our older adult community, so I'm proud to be a co-sponsor in this package, and with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Ariola.
I would just like to disclose for the record that my son works for the DSNY.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
I vote no on pre-considered Resolution 457 and Introduction 559A, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. De La Rosa.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
I want to disclose that my son is a camera operator for Brick Media Brooklyn, Brick Arts Media Brooklyn Incorporated.
Thank you. Farias.
I'd like to disclose on record that my parent works at NYU Langone, and a sibling works, is a student at MS 127 that may be funded within this transparency resolution, and I vote aye on all.
Feliz.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye on all.
Hanif.
Aye on all.
Hanks.
Aye on all.
Holden.
I vote aye on all except for pre-considered Reso 457, for which I vote no. I also like to disclose on the record that my son works for New York Presbyterian, and my other son works for CUNY, adjunct lecturer, and that's in the transparency resolve. Thank you.
Thank you. Hudson.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to thank Speaker Adams for her commitment to older adults, and I'd also like to thank Nick Connell, Nicole Branstad, Indiana Porta, Andrea Vasquez, Jeff Baker, Jeremy John, Chris Pepe, Chloe Rivera, Dan Croup, my staff, Andrew Wright, and Casey Addison, as well as my colleagues from the Aging Committee who are also on these bills, councilmembers Schulman, Lee, Dinowitz, and Richardson Jordan, and I'm really proud to be passing bills that are part of the Age and Place NYC Package today, and thanks to all of my colleagues for voting on it as well. Thank you. And I am aye on all with the exception of LU 155, and I'd like to disclose on the record that my partner is employed by Planned Parenthood Federation of America, which I believe is being funded in the transparency resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph.
Aye on all.
Kagan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm going to vote no on Intro 559A because I believe that small businesses like cafes, restaurants should not be punished for including condiment or napkins in a takeout order. We need to support our small businesses, especially after this devastating pandemic, and this bill is also basically micromanaging the operation of all restaurants, cafes, sushi bars, et cetera. So I'm voting no on Intro 559A. I'm also voting no on pre-considered Resolution 0457, and also Resolutions 387, 392A. And I wanted to disclose that my daughter is a student in CUNY College, and I vote yes, aye on everything else.
Thank you, Councilmember. Krishnan.
Aye on all.
Lee.
Aye on all.
Lewis.
Aye on all.
Marte.
Aye on all.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
Aye on all.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye for all.
Nurse.
Aye on all.
Osay.
Aye on all.
Palladino.
Aye on all except for Intro 559A and Reso 457, and which I vote no.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Aye.
Richardson Jordan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
So I just want to echo some of the sentiments around the senior care package. I'm very proud of what's come out of our Aging Committee. Yes, the Know Your Rights pamphlet, which was indicated at the top of our stated today, but also the part of the package is deep cultural programming for senior centers, culturally relevant programming, which is really important. Also, part of the package is housing stability for our seniors who are at risk of eviction and foreclosure. So I just want to commend Councilmember Hudson and Aging Committee, and I'm happy to be part of that. Also, speaking of housing, I want to say thank you to Chelsea Kelly and Land Use for the technical correction on the 34 Morningside project. I want to say that this is now seven buildings, seven, that have either been approved, come through, or slated to be approved that meet our community standard and one outlier. Thank you to this body for their support. Aye on all.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye on all.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
I'd like to disclose on the record that my sibling works at CUNY BMCC, and with that, aye on all.
Thank you. Schulman.
Aye on all.
I would like to disclose for the record that my daughter is a student at CUNY and also works at New York City Presbyterian, and aye on all.
Ung.
Aye on all.
Velazquez.
I'd like to disclose, my husband is a deputy commissioner at DEP, and my brother is a board member of Samaritans of New York. Aye on all.
Thank you. Vernikov.
No on pre-considered Reso 457, no on 559A, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I didn't have any prepared remarks, but I just wanted to send my condolences to the right group. Me and John go back since the state days, and it's really hard to find people in this business that actually care about you the person and your well-being, so it's really a loss to both the lobby world and the cultural world in New York City, and I just wanted to send my condolences to his friends and family, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Juan.
Aye on all.
Jaeger.
May I be excused to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to very briefly discuss Intro 559, as some members have spoken heretofore about it and their reasons for voting no. I'm voting no on it as well, and I think this goes to a theme that we've had in the city for the last several years about the micromanaging of small businesses. I get the idea that we don't want to overburden the waste stream. It's also important to keep in mind that the businesses that give these items out have, or in this bill, excuse me, are prohibited from giving it out unless the customer requests it. But if a business says to the customer, would you like ketchup packets or mustard packets, et cetera, and then the customer says yes, is that a request, or is that an answer in the affirmative? We know that the agencies that enforce these kinds of laws are out there every day hunting, hunting for summonses to write. We know that. We know that because the constituents call us. They call every one of us about these summonses that they get, which they deem unfair and which are unfair, and of course, the answer is always go to oath, and we all know that oath finds you guilty no matter what. But I also want to point out that we, as required, we put out a fiscal impact statement that says that we anticipate there will be no impact on revenues, right, and there's no fines going to be issued because we assume full compliance. Okay, sure. And we also anticipate that there will be no impact on expenditures from the enactment of this legislation. In other words, it's not going to cost the city any money to go around enforcing this. Does anybody really believe that? So I'm voting no on that because it's just a dumb bill, and I am also abstaining on Resolution 457. Thank you very much.
Borelli.
Thank you. I vote aye on all except pre-considered Reso 0457 and Intro 559A. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Powers. I vote aye. Speaker Adams.
I would like to disclose for the record that I'm a member of the Greater Alanyamee Cathedral, which is included in this transparency resolution, and also congratulate Councilmember Dinowitz on his important legislation. I too, as a nephew with special needs heading to college, who I'm very, very proud of, and I'm so happy to be a part of a body that will pass this legislation in his behalf today. Thank you very, very much. I vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exceptions of Resolution 457, adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, seven negative, and one abstentions. Intro 559A, adopted by a vote of 43 in the affirmative, seven negative, and zero abstentions. Land use item 155 and accompanying resolution 1467, adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, one negative, and one abstention. Land use item
one negative, and one abstention; Land Use Items 156 and 157 with accompanying resolutions, adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, zero negative, and one abstentions. We'll now move into the introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We'll now move into the discussion of resolutions. We have one Councilmember signed up. We'll now turn to Councilmember Tiffany Caban.
Thank you. We like to call Puerto Rico the sixth borough, but unlike the other five, on any given day in Puerto Rico, thousands to hundreds of thousands of people live without electricity, chiefly in poorer areas, and in the wake of the battering winds of Hurricane Maria and Fiona, a tsunami of shock doctrine disaster capitalism has hit Puerto Rico, courtesy of Washington DC and Wall Street. After the hurricanes, the government of Puerto Rico agreed to a partial privatization of the energy sector and awarded the contract to a newly hatched consortium, Luma Energy, and under that deal, public funds go towards maintaining the island's fossil fuel-dependent electric grid and supplying dividends for Luma owners in the US and Canada. And as always with these schemes, this has only made matters worse. Since Luma's takeover, outages have only become longer and more frequent, and that means schools ill-equipped to handle constant outages, bedridden people at risk of dying when their medical equipment fails, and restaurants losing inventory and having to close, and much, much more. And not only that, over the course of one year alone, Puerto Ricans have been subjected to seven rate hikes, and so that's why Reso 392 calls for that cancellation of the contract. Can I go an extra 20 seconds? Majority Leader? He's not even listening. I should just keep going, right? All right.
Well, the Majority Leader's not paying attention. You can keep going.
I'm gonna wrap. All right. So ultimately, however, Luma itself is just a symptom of a bigger problem: colonialism. Puerto Ricans remain subjects, not citizens, of the United States, utterly at the mercy of its ruling class. Their resources are plundered, their democracy is stamped out, their human rights are strangled, and there could be no clearer sign of this than the dramatic outmigration the past decade. And of course, the colonial decision-makers don't mind losing the population. It makes profitable land grabs that much easier, and so that's why I'm supporting Deputy Speaker Ayala's Resolutions 57 and 387-2.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Respectively, in support of enacting the Puerto Rico Self-Determination Act and repealing the Jones Act. I'm proud we're passing these resos, and Puerto Rico must be free. So thank you, Deputy Speaker.
Thank you. Apologies, we were clarifying a vote, which I'm just going to read to the record as clarification. We're going to first call on Councilmember Hudson, just to clarify her vote.
For LU 155, I abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we have a clarification. Land Use Item 155 and Resolution 467 were adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two abstentions. Thank you. We are now going to have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or approaching the dais before the vote. I'll now read the resolutions into the record. Resolution 57A calls on Congress to pass and the President to sign a bill in support of self-determination for Puerto Rico. With all those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 387 calls on the US Congress to repeal the Merchant Marine Act of 1920, commonly known as the Jones Act. Will all those in favor please say aye? All opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 392A calls supporting a democratically governed public entity that will provide reliable and affordable electrical power to the people of Puerto Rico and supporting the immediate cancellation of the contract with Luma Energy. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into... Thank you for that. We will now move into today's general discussion. We are going to start the general discussion with Councilmember Barron, and we will be followed by Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, my colleagues. I'd just rise to share with you another perspective on Dr. Martin Luther King. When we talk about Dr. Martin Luther King, you hear things like social justice, equality. What you won't hear is a black radical socialist. What you won't hear, he was anti-capitalism. What you won't hear, he was anti-imperialist wars. Dr. Martin Luther King is a victim of being frozen in history, what the capitalist propaganda machinery does, is they freeze black leaders in a point in their development that the white society is comfortable with. So they were comfortable with Dr. King when he said, "I have a dream," when he wanted to integrate, but by 1967 and 1968, his dream turned into a nightmare, so he said, "Now I have a radical vision." He said perhaps to Harry Vallafonte, "Perhaps I'm integrating into a burning house." That burning house was a colonial capitalist society. Dr. King said, "I worked very hard to integrate, to reform the systems of the South. A little change here, a little change there, but now I think differently. There needs to be a radical rearrangement of the entire society, a revolution of values." When Dr. King came to New York and spoke out against the war in Vietnam, he couldn't find a black church to speak in. He had to speak at Riverside. Now they all have uncomfortable Dr. King programs and talking about social justice. In Dr. King's last year, when he was marching to Washington, he said, "No more speeches, no more photo ops." He was marching in the Poor People's Campaign, wanted to set up Resurrection City to make sure that the $60 billion anti-poverty program was passed that John Conyers had put in. Dr. King was a revolutionary. He evolved from integration to revolution, but they won't talk about it because they want to be comfortable with having a dream.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I think.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you, Majority. I appreciate the time. I want to say thank you for the speech. Sometimes we hear, we understand, and we look forward to address the inequities in our community. The intro for 884, I'm going to ask my colleagues to help me to support. As a former triage nurse, I understand you must first diagnose a problem before you can prescribe treatment. In just over a year of touring our city hospitals and jails, and in my capacity as a Chair of Committee on Hospitals, one thing struck me. There does not appear to be a clear understanding on what it is our city's mental health, bed capacity, or what are our overall needs. This lack of clarity severely affects our ability to properly treat those with mental illness and assist behavioral health clients. With one in five New Yorkers experiencing mental illness annually, the need to provide services to those in need is outstanding. Therefore, I hope you will join me, my colleagues, you will join me and make sure that we address this inequity that we're talking about. The best way our community can respond, it's, just give me a second, I just lost my thought for a minute. The best way we can do that is making sure that we vote, we pass legislation that would make sense for our city. I firmly believe that the task force is needed to provide transparency and clarity on a crucial issue, which our city must be resolute in addressing too many New Yorkers suffering with mental illness, struggling every day to get support in our system. So please, I'm asking you to support me in this, because we need to address mental health in our city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now go to...
And if I may, for John, for John, it's a great loss in our city, and for me coming from art, and my daughter just graduated from Juilliard, and I was excited to get them to meet together. That's personal, and I want to let everyone know, when you have a good person in our community that helping and supporting uplifts, especially with arts, so I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Councilmember Holden.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Majority Leader. So, two things. Our city, first of all, is in a deep housing crisis, and it is not one that is felt equally by all New Yorkers. The most recent housing vacancy survey shows a vacancy rate of 12.6% for apartments renting over $2,300 per month. There's not a vacancy, there's not an emergency with those units, but the vacancy rate for low-cost apartments is functionally zero. This is unsustainable, and the answer is clear. We need to stabilize our lowest-income and working-class New Yorkers, and expanding perhaps eligibility can do that. I hope my colleagues will join me, Deputy Speaker Ayala, Councilmember Abilas, and Councilmember Hanif and others, in supporting a package of bills heard yesterday, introduced today, Intro 878, 893, 894, and Reso 465, to relieve perhaps requirements and expand access. Next, I am so, so proud to introduce Intro 875, to reduce STI infection rates across the city of New York and save lives by making rapid testing services available in all five boroughs and launching an education campaign. The Bronx has over 23,500 people living with HIV in 2021. This is over three times higher than the overall New York State rate, and the highest within New York City, with rates more than double those in Brooklyn, Queens, and Staten Island. In 2021, the Bronx also had the highest rates of HIV and AIDS deaths. This is unbelievable to be facing this crisis in 2021, where one in 11 white gay men will face HIV positivity, but one in two African-American men, same-gender-loving men, will face HIV positivity, and one in four Latino men. These disparities are stark, they're unacceptable, and anything and everything we can do to change that reality must be done. So I'm proud to introduce 875, and I hope my colleagues will join me in honor of the National HIV/AIDS Awareness Month that's going to be observed on February 7. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Holden, followed by Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I asked my colleagues to support Intros 882, 883, and Reso 461. As always, I try to focus my legislation on quality of life, bills that will improve New York City for all residents. Intro 882 deals with Mylar balloons, which are increasingly causing power outages when they float up to the power lines and short it. That happened in my district, and it happens all over the city. Con Ed has brought that to my attention. It's a huge issue. These Mylar balloons should come up, should have a consumer warning on them, and that's what this bill does. And also, the balloons should be weighted, so they just don't float up into the atmosphere and certainly into the power lines. Reso 461 is asking the MTA to provide discounts to seniors, students, and people with disabilities on express buses during rush hour. And finally, Intro 883 repeals the laws that legalize motorized e-scooters and e-bikes. We rushed into that legislation, legalizing them, without a plan and without regulations in place. This has led to anarchy on our streets with these devices, or the drivers disobeying traffic laws, driving on sidewalks, and getting into collisions with pedestrians and motorists. To give you some numbers, in 2022, there were 790 crashes of e-bikes and e-scooters, resulting tragically in 842 injuries and nine fatalities. These devices were legalized in 2020 by the state legislature, and then the New York City Council. Since then, we've seen an increase in fires due to them. Last year, FDNY investigated nearly 200 fires caused by lithium-ion batteries. These batteries resulted in 100 injuries and six fatalities. In 2021, we saw 104 fires, nearly 80 injuries and four fatalities. In 2020, there were 44 fires and 20 injuries. One second, I'll be finished.
You can finish.
If you look at the numbers, it's evident that these increased due to the state and city legalizing these devices without ensuring they were safe. So, in the meantime, we need these vehicles off our streets until the city can determine how they can be regulated. Thank you, and I urge my colleagues to support these bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. We'll now go to Councilmember Brooks Powers, followed by Councilmember Abilas.
First, I'd like to disclose that I'm a member of the Allen AME Cathedral, and that we voted to fund them today. Today, I'm proud to be introducing a bill alongside Councilmember Krishnan. This bill will encourage installation of bollards. These short posts can help improve street safety citywide. Each year, hundreds die and thousands are injured in car accidents, car crashes, excuse me. Infrastructure upgrades, physical changes to our streets can help slow down drivers and decrease the number of crashes. Bollards can calm traffic, mark off bike lanes, and protect pedestrians. This bill will require the DOT, study effectiveness of bollards, create guidelines for their installation, and place them at more intersections throughout the city. I ask for my colleagues' support on this bill, and look forward to continuing the conversation around how to ensure our streets are safe. And I'd just like to conclude by also extending a Happy Founder's Day to my sorority sisters, the Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, alongside with Councilmember Natasha Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to separate you two, I think, shortly. We're going to go to Councilmember Abilas, followed by Councilmember Ferris.
Hello. I wish to uplift and support my incredible colleague, Councilmember Tiffany Caban's comments about Puerto Rico. No to la colonia, no to imperialism, que viva Puerto Rico libre, and now let's abolish la junta. So it's been just a year into my term as an elected representative for Council District 38, and at this point of reflection, I really want to acknowledge the many, many colleagues I am so proud to work alongside in this struggle for justice, equity, and returning democracy to our people. So gracias, thank you to each of you. As we know, New York City is not the blue bastion so often portrayed in the national media. For example, anti-immigrant rhetoric is alive and well here, and has begun to take shape as the primary narrative that the administration and others will pursue in order to justify this devastating fiscal '24 austerity budget proposal. I assure you, this is a false narrative and wrong. The shock and awe system of governance is alive and well here in the five boroughs. We saw this during the '23 budget process. We see it again during the proposed budget modifications, and we see it again with the public service retirees being threatened with the loss of their promised healthcare benefits. The challenge many of us are facing after a barrage of assaults on our communities, namely in dismantling and defunding the social safety net at all levels of government. We will not, and just take, we will not just take the what you can get while you can get it form of government, no matter how long, how the term costs to our communities and our city. After one year of service, I know that our choices as leaders cannot be to do nothing. Not only must we uphold the promise we made to serve our communities, but where we can make the most impact, which is at home, we must deconstruct the style of governance that leaves us feeling that change is not possible. Please support Resolution 2456 in support of the federal legislation that enables states to reimburse SNAP benefits to recipients.
Thank you, Councilmember, and happy belated birthday. We'll now go to Councilmember Ferris, followed by Councilmember Hanif.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I have two resolutions being introduced today that I want to urge all of my colleagues to sign on to. The first is Reso 459, calling upon the state and the governor to sign into law that municipalities are prohibited from requiring all employers to check work status through the federal electronic verification system. This bill is designed to help our immigrant communities not only access more employment opportunities, but also keep the jobs they already have. In 2010, 80,000 immigrants across the nation lost their ability to work because of this system. In New York State, over 34,000 employers currently still use this verification system to check on their employees and potential employee status. This system is the complete opposite of what our city needs, especially in the middle of a crucial need for economic and workforce development. That is why we need to ensure that municipalities like New York City are banned from using this system. As a transit advocate, I'm excited for the second. Reso 460 calls on the state and governor to fully fund the MTA in the state's upcoming fiscal year 2024 budget in an effort to ensure that the MTA operates more frequent bus and train service statewide. Six-minute service would create a faster, safer, and more accessible system for our outer borough communities like mine and so many of our districts, who rely on buses and trains to get us to work and back home safely to our families. I urge all of you to support our colleagues in the state who are advocating to fix the MTA and provide greater accessibility and affordability to New Yorkers who need it most. I look forward to seeing all of you sign on, and lastly, Happy Lunar New Year, and Happy Founder's Day to all my sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilmember Hanif, followed by Councilmember Osay.
Thank you so much. Last Tuesday, Sarah...
Last Tuesday, Sarah Schick was struck and killed by a truck while riding a bicycle in Gowanis on Ninth Street and Second Avenue in my district. She was only 37 years old. I want to send my deepest condolences to her husband, her two sons, and all of our loved ones. This tragedy is made all the more painful knowing that it was avoidable. Six people have now died on Ninth Street in the last 18 years. It is a location that the DOT has identified as unsafe. We cannot wait any longer to take action. Tomorrow, I'll be doing an onsite walkthrough with DOT, and I'll be demanding we make desperately needed infrastructure improvements to avoid any more tragedies. From Third Avenue to Smith, the bike lane is currently marked only by paint. We need to make it hardened with cement barriers in order to make it legitimately protected and prevent future crashes. I'm committed to making my district one where people can get from place to place safely without fear. We cannot accept traffic violence as anything else but a policy failure. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilwoman Ose, followed by Councilmember Krishnan, and finally, Councilwoman Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I just wanted to share my love and my deep condolences to the family and loved ones of John Wright. When I was appointed to the chairmanship of, on the Committee on Cultural Affairs, Libraries and International Intergroup Relations, John became a bit of a mentor for me in terms of showing me to the cultural community of New York City, which is a beautiful, vibrant one. And if you know me, or even if you don't, you may know that I don't really like lobbyists. I find them very annoying. However, John Wright was not one of those lobbyists. He was someone that didn't do his job because it was a job, he did it because he cared for the organizations and communities that he worked with and for, whether it was cultural organizations in the creative field, or whether it was, you know, black economic development organizations like Restoration Plaza. So he will be missed. Such unfortunate news to hear about what happened this week. And if there's a message that I would like to leave with the rest of my colleagues in terms of how we can honor John and his, you know, beliefs and in his fight and in the work that he did, is to, you know, I hope we can continue to respect and champion, you know, our cultural community, because it makes our city vibrant every single day. And John shared that vibrancy with myself, like that community did as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We'll now go to Councilwoman Krishnan, and finally, Councilwoman Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader. First, I just want to say that I'm proud to co-sponsor the legislation being introduced by Majority Web Brooks Powers about bollards in our city, and would urge all our colleagues to sign onto it. Now, I also want to just say a few words, first thanking all our colleagues here, across the city and state, as well as everyone in my community, who reached out with words of support and solidarity after the appalling display of hate outside my home on Mother King Day, no less, with my children present, too. And it's just a glimpse of the kind of hate that our LGBTQIA+ communities experience every day, and especially our trans communities in particular. So many false, utterly false assertions are made about drag story hour programming at our public libraries. And the fact of the matter is, the only, about the horrific things that our children supposedly experience at this programming, yet the only horrific things that our children are hearing are the offensive words, slurs, and the acts of hate that they're seeing by these individuals who are coming to protest these events. And I think it's just a moment also for me to extend my solidarity to other council members who have experienced the same things at their homes, Councilmember Botcher, Councilmember Hudson, and to really take a minute to urge all of our colleagues together to fight by the side of our LGBTQIA+ communities against such hate in particular. As Speaker Adams, Councilwoman Botcher, Councilwoman Hudson and I had said earlier in a statement, the harmful homophobic and transphobic extremism targeting drag story hour events and the New Yorkers who support them, including council members, is vile and dangerous. We will not stay silent or accept these shameful acts and attempts to intimidate and spread hate, especially after recent incidents that have devolved into violence and put New Yorkers in harm's way. This city council is proud to support children's programs that promote inclusivity, literacy, and joy. We are proud always to fight by the side of our LGBTQIA+ communities against such hate. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'll close out with Councilwoman Hanks.
Thank you, Majority Leader. On December 23, right before Christmas, our community tragically lost three young children in a house fire in my district. I just wanted to say for the record their names: Soraya Miles, six, Ashley Miles, five, and Aiden Miles, five. I wanted to thank FDNY, NYPD, who worked tirelessly to revive these children and save their lives. I also want to thank the mayor, Speaker Adrian Adams, and Councilmember Barron, and all my colleagues in the council who called and offered words of support. These children will be memorialized, laid to rest on Saturday, January 21, in Brooklyn. Please keep your thoughts and prayers with this family, and especially the 10-year-old that is still in critical condition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now open our call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close out today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Majority Leader. The stated meeting of January 19, 2023, is hereby adjourned.